Okay, today is Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. We call this village board meeting order with a clerk, Caroline, please take the role.
Trustee Feiter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here. Every board member is here tonight. We have a full quorum for the first meeting of 2023. Next, we're going to do the pledge allegiance invocation. Tonight, we have the invocation from Pastor Gorski at the Elk Grove Presbyterian Church. Everyone, please rise. Pastor, if you would, please. You first. God comes first, always, always.
Let us pray. Loving God, we thank you that you continue to walk with us through all that we do in life. We ask your special blessing on this new year, 2023. We thank you for the leadership that is before us here, all the important decisions they make to care for your people who live here in this community. We celebrate the many gifts you have given them and all of our people here, especially tonight. We celebrate the three officers who are getting promotions. We ask your special care over them as they serve all of us here and keep us safe. May we learn this year even more, to listen to your voice, to follow in your ways, and to be people of love, as you showed us every day. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Pastor, hang on a second. Thank you for coming, as always. We appreciate it very much. And not that bad, pretty close. But start the year off, we got plenty of nice.
I'm going to can some to the kids.
Oh, we'll take care of them. You enjoy them, that's for you. Thank you very much for everything. God bless. Thank you. Okay, we move the approval of the minutes of December 13th, 2022.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on December 13th, 2022, as submitted and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
Motion by trustee Listner, second by trustee Feiter. Without objection, well, first, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show unanimous approval. Move on now to the mayor and board of trustees report, and we do have some sworn ends we're going to do in a little bit, but a few items before that. First off, happy new year to everyone. It's a brand-new year, we're excited about it, 2023. We actually had a very good 2022. The village is doing very well, and I hope to see it carry over, and so far, signs it's carrying over very well into the new year. Business Park is doing phenomenal, a lot of projects going on the residential side, so we're excited about everything going on, and we're looking forward to it. Now, we've had, I shouldn't announce now even, our next coffee with the board will be held on Saturday, February 4th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. We're down in Meeting Room E, which is downstairs. You say you can probably come in the door right there, by where you do early voting, or you can come up here and find your way around to where we're at. So, we're looking forward to that. And again, that's where people show up, ask any questions you want, we're more than happy to answer for you. And the best thing about it is, you get Drage Bakery Goods, which everyone in Elk Grove and around the world loves, and so, anyone may see us, you get to enjoy Drage. See you when that way. Another thing, some people are going to ask us, I know they're seeing things out there, I know masks are coming back. Again, we were the only town, I think, around that last time didn't require masks. We will not require masks again. However, if you want to wear a mask, God bless you, wear a mask. If you want a mask, we'll give you a mask. But they're not coming back to Elk Grove, they weren't here last time, and we were right about it, we're not going to have it this time. So, I've had probably half a dozen seniors, especially at the fitness center, asking about it. No, masks will not be required in Elk Grove, just like they weren't before. Also, coming up this June, we're going to be celebrating five years of the Elk Grove Cares Program. And the reason I'm bringing that up, we've got more events coming up about that, we're going to bring it up again, is they just had a big article in the paper about the record number of opioid deaths in Cook County last year. It's going to set a record again. And a lot of this is tied to fentanyl and all the other stuff. So, again, in Elk Grove, we treat the way it should be addiction as a disease. It is a disease. And so, we are going to continue our cares program, it's been doing phenomenal work. Again, if you know someone, if you need it, you have a friend, family, they don't have to live in Elk Grove, if you're living in Elk Grove, you've got a relative somewhere or a friend somewhere, we will help them. They come to Elk Grove, if they have drugs, we confiscate it, they're gone. We don't arrest people. And we will get you help. If you have insurance, it pays for it. If you don't have insurance, we pay for it. But we're going to get you help. So, please, as these numbers keep rising, it's sad to see, we are here to help you, and we're trained, that's why you see Elk Grove Cares signs everywhere, our officers are all trained, everyone to help you. We will help you get a place to get cleaned up, to get help, and we don't stop there. That's what's unique about Elk Grove Cares, we stay with you. We'll help you get back on your feet, we'll help you find jobs, we'll help you do, you know, a place to live. We're there to help you get through this and beat the disease of addiction. So, we're excited, sad to see that article, how it's setting a record again in Cook County, but we're here to say, there's hope for you here in Elk Grove. So, please, keep that in mind. Next thing I want to talk about, we're very excited that one of our fellow governments here in Elk Grove won one of the highest awards they could. The Elk Grove Library just was ranked a five-star rating in the latest American Star Libraries of Library Journal. It's a national ranking, and their number, there's only 85 out of almost 6,000 libraries in this country that received that ranking. So, kudos to the library here in Elk Grove, to the board for the hard work they do, and the director. We're very proud that Elk Grove has one of the best libraries in the country. Makes sense, we've got one of the best park districts, one of the best village governments, and now, the best library. So, we're excited about that. I know it's a day late, and it's perfect timing, we've got three swearing ends with the police department tonight, but yesterday was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And as we say all the time, in Elk Grove, we back a blue a million percent, and we're proud of it. So, Chief, to you and your staff and all your people, phenomenal job. Again, we want to recognize you and thank you for all that the department does on behalf of this community. Another one, there's an old saying that copying is the greatest form of flattery. And we're very excited to see two things that our favorite suburb, Schaumburg, is doing. One, Schaumburg announced a $217 million capital plan, includes roads, bikeways, utilities, drainage, all that. If you remember, about four years ago, we kicked off on our 2025 plan, updating roads, drainage, and all that, we're spending in excess of $150 million. So, we're glad to see Schaumburg doing the same thing in their community, and it's been very successful here in Elk Grove. That got us a new, two new fire stations, got us our public works, two buildings redone, and many other things with drainage issues in backyards of residents. We spit up our road, matter of fact, the capital improvements committee is meeting in a week, right, trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
To talk about next year's roads.
Monday.
So, we're doing way more roads, we're spending millions more dollars a year, keeping our things up to go, and it's seen that. But the biggest compliment Schaumburg gave us is right here, where Mayor Daley, our good friend, said Schaumburg homeowners might receive $150 rebates from the community. And matter of fact, to Mayor Daley's credit, Daley said the only similar relief program he's heard of was Elk Grove Village, where officials in September made out $200 gift cards to residents, trying to promote shop Elk Grove and help our people, and we sent out to all 14,000 households in Elk Grove. So, again, copying is one of the greatest forms of flattery. Now, we love Schaumburg, they're only 150, we're at $200, so, you know, just a little thing there. Plus, remember, we gave out two $200 water bill credits before that, so, every homeowner got $600 in credit for Elk Grove. Trustee Frankie?
It also said "might."
Might, that's true. They are working on it, because they have talked to staff a few times how we did it. So, we're glad that we're kind of blazing a trail of when governments are doing well, I know it's unusual, that we give the money back to the taxpayers, actually, back to them. I know you don't hear that from government too often, but I'm glad to see Schaumburg might be doing the same thing, and I give Mayor Daley thank you for making sure you recognize that we set the trail that people are following. So, that's a very nice thing, to see that. Good news from Chief Walsh, all of our liquor establishments passed a check once again. If you remember, 23 years ago, we were the first town in the country that required mandatory carding for liquor passage or sales in Elk Grove, and it continues to work. We have, knock on wood, we have almost no failures, twice a year we check, two, three times a year we check, we have almost no failures ever of young people getting liquor when they shouldn't be getting it. So, it still works, it's still successful, and again, the young people are our future, and we want to make sure we protect them from making bad decisions. Next, let's go to a real positive thing. Maggie, you ready? As everyone knows, the Rose Garden Cafe is part of a redevelopment up at the corner of Arantine, Trona Higgins, the old Bell and Alley Shopping Center there, is relocating to the old Sweet Baby Ray's on Higgins. And we showed about a month ago or so, the exterior renovations, let's show that again, what it's going to look like. That's going to be the exterior, I know it doesn't look at all like Sweet Baby Ray's, and if you drive by there now, even in winter, you can see the wood going up, they're starting to do the work on it to change the exterior. Well, now, tonight, we'd like to show you the interior of the new Rose Garden. So, that's going to be the interior, that's going down the center, when you walk in, you see the pies for sale, seating on both sides, Maggie. That'll be the left-hand side after you go in, all new lights, new paint, new tables, new decor, all that, and the other side, the right side, and that'd be the other side of the dining room. So, that will be a far change from Rose Garden that you see today here in Elk Grove when they open up. So, I want to thank Chris, his partner George, Chris's wife Alex, for, that is an A-plus development they're doing here in Elk Grove. We cannot thank them enough. So, from the exterior, Maggie, go back if you can to the exterior. Again, that's the interior, the exterior, look at that, they're going to have outdoor seating, I mean, we cannot thank them enough for thinking outside the box and really delivering a first-class establishment. Again, we're looking for that to open up, hopefully by April, at that location. And again, it works out beautiful with us, as we do the redevelopment at that shopping center. We got them a great location across from the tech park, and so, we want to thank again Chris and Alex. Let them know, you appreciate what their investment they're making here in the village as you move on. Trust me, they're putting a lot more money in than we are in the development, so, we're very happy with that. Maggie, thank you. So, excited about that. Also, now, we're talking about that, tonight, we're going to announce the company we're going to be working with for the redevelopment of that shopping center area. As you know, we had an open house about a month, month and a half ago, no, actually a couple of months ago, over at the pavilion, and we laid out four potential developers and their plans for the new apartment slash retail shopping area over there. And the great thing about that was, we had almost 300 people show up that night, they gave their input, their ideas, their thoughts, we had pages and pages of comments, and the one thing that came out, I would say probably about 80%, maybe 85% of people, the one they picked is the one we're going to announce tonight. So, the input from the residents helped us, kind of guided us, some of their ideas are doing it, and just so we know what happened, the company that we're going to be working with is Wingspan. Wingspan is a company that is in Mount Prospect, some of the companies we had were national companies, they, one was Richmond, Virginia, and stuff like that, but Wingspan's a local company. They did their, excuse me, they did our two public works garages that were built during our 2025 plan, the one on Devon and the one at Meacham in Beasterfield. They did the memorial park across the street. So, we've had a lot of experience with them. They're also ones that do a lot of school renovations throughout the area, am I correct? So, they are a local business, they do do national work, I know they've done work in Phoenix, down in Tampa, down in Florida and stuff like that, but they're local, so that's good for us. We've got someone we can work with hand-in-hand, close to us, we have a good history with them. They've never let us down in any project they've done in Elk Grove, and some of those are pretty good-sized projects. So, Wingspan is going to be our partner for this development. Again, between 80, 85% of the people that gave us comments liked their plans the best. So, what's going to happen is this, as we go on, we brought some of the ideas that were brought forth from the residents, they're going to incorporate in new layouts, they're going to be modified some, and the exterior of the building's going to be modified some. We expect over the next couple of months that they'll be putting together some plans, site elevations, and layout of the buildings, traffic flow and all that, and our goal would be probably end of February, maybe March, probably in March, they will have another open house. And we're going to invite all the residents to come again, view what we feel is getting close to what we're envisioning going to happen there, to get one last chance to give some of your ideas and views about it. Then, what we expect to happen is, it would go before the plant commission, and the plant commission is public also, so if you want to give even more ideas, you'd have that availability. And then, the goal would be, hopefully, start construction maybe as early as the end of this year. And remember, we're going to build it in two phases, which they can do, as the other ones could do. They'll build the new retail development along Higgins first, then, that means all the businesses, the bike shop, Tensuki, Drage, Phoebe Nails, Vinnie's, and Subway, all can keep going. When they get done with the development along Higgins Retail, they can move from their old locations into the new locations, then they'll tear down that and start building the apartment rental row home division next. So, none of the businesses will have to go out of business, none of these shut down for months on end, they can still keep going. So, it's a win-win all the way around. So, that's our timeframe we're looking at. As soon as we have it set up firm, we'll announce that. But we want to thank the residents for their input. As we said from day one on this development, this is going to be as open and transparent of anyone, anywhere, not just Elk Grove, out of development like this ever done. I know any town that's done what we did before we even got that far. We let you all pick the developer, and we're excited about that. So, it's going to keep going, we're looking forward to it, and we think it's going to turn out to be a great template for this village, a great injury to this village, and as I said before, I'll say again, this may not be the only corner we do in Elk Grove. This is helping us set the way to do it if we do more locations. I said before many times, the old way of shopping is gone. We have to make sure we meet the new way of doing it, so it's successful and good for the community, and that's what we're doing here. Last thing, before we do the swearing ends, I've said this so many times, I've lost count, Facebook. Believe about 1%, if that much, of what you read on Facebook most of the time. It's sad, but true. We've got a person that continuously goes up there, and unfortunately, upsets people, and that's what bothers me. If you want to lie, lie, but don't do it in a way that you upset people. And I had a person approach me, and staff was able to find today, Mr. Jeff Snyder, once again, talking about gas stations, and he goes on the west side, Ricky Rockets is almost ready to open on Rollin Road in Itasca, a half-block south of Real Time Sports, for our new gas station. This place will put the mayor's pet gas station, Love's, to shame, where they lower its tax in DuPage County fuel taxes, and very welcome to Westside resident with the village's moratorium it placed on Westside Fuel Station several years ago. That's a lie. That's an out-and-out lie. We've never put a moratorium on gas stations. We welcome them anywhere they want to come. They serve a purpose, they bring tax revenues, we brought Love's Fuel Station, came in because of the Bahamas Bowl, but they did come, which we were very happy about. But for him to say that, that's an out-and-out lie. Then he goes on to say, "The limit on construction and expansion of Westside Fuel Stations has stifled competition for Westside residents, caused them to pay higher fuel prices for many years." We have not stifled any expansions, we've not stopped any expansion of fuel stations, we have nothing to do with it, we welcome it. It's an improvement, better service, hopefully more sales, good for the community, more sales tax. So, that's an out-and-out lie. And I'm going to start prying these out more and more, because that's a disservice to this community, making people live on the west side that they're getting ripped off, and it's because of the village? That's wrong. So, again, we've brought Jeff up many times before, he's already discredited our police department in the past, he said our public works guys put out dangerous vehicles that can kill people and stuff, you know, that's just wrong. So, anytime you read anything from Jeff Snyder, know it's a lie, because he's proven himself time and time again. And that's what's bad about Facebook, because I had people approach me on this, and they were upset, and I don't blame them. And we set the record straight with them, and they appreciated that. So, again, if you ever have a question, or someone puts out stuff like that, call one of us. Every board member's up here, call me, 847-437-8226, and I have a cell phone, that's my home number, I answer every call, I call everyone back. Call me if you have a question, anything, I'll give you an answer. If I don't have the answer, I'll find it for you. But don't believe that garbage that people put out. It's sad that people do stuff like that, and I call them out, I have no problem with that, you know? And here's what he is, he's a town clown, and that's my opinion, but that's what he is in my book, and that's not right. So, that's gone. Now, let's move on to good stuff, Mr. Knabacher, and again, I said my opinion.
You did.
Okay. We're going to do some swearing in here. So, Chief Walsh, we got some young ones out there, all excited, and other ones, why don't we, these are all promotions tonight too, so we'll start, work from bottom up?
Yep, bottom up. Justin Wolf, if you could come up to the dais. So, I want to thank mayor and the village board, and our fire and police commission back there for giving us excellent candidates for promotion. In order to be promoted to a sergeant, the first step in the supervisory journey, there's a written test that's involved, an assessment center, interviews with the fire and police commission, supervisory evaluations, and of course, they're placed on an eligibility list. So, we had a sergeant retire a few months ago, and so, we had a vacancy, so tonight, we're going to promote Justin Wolf to sergeant. He was hired in September of 2016, so he's got six years on his service, which is a pretty quick time for an officer to make it through the ranks, but you'll find out that he's done a lot of outstanding things in those six years. He went to the suburban law enforcement academy, and we actually have a member from the suburban law enforcement academy today, Bob Nichols, at the end down there, he is a program coordinator that came out. Some of the prior experience that Justin had was, he was a 911 operator up at our northwest central dispatch center, he was a CSO in Palatine and a police officer in Lincolnwood, he's went to ISU, and you got a bachelor of arts in criminal justice.
Hang on. I assume, George?
Redbirds.
That's an easy one.
Very good. Justin has over 900 hours of training, he's a lead homicide investigator, narcotics investigations, a field evidence technician. In October of 2017, he received a life-saving award, where he saved someone's life that was overdosing, and he provided Narcan. He started out as a police officer, he became a field training officer, he was a criminal investigator, and then, he had one of the unique assignments to a task force, our north suburban narcotics task force, where he would go undercover and identify drug rings in the northwest suburbs. So, you heard the mayor talk about Elk Grove Cares, we treat the addict, we get them help because it's a disease, but we also still enforce drug laws. So, Justin would work with a team of Illinois State Police inspectors, and they would help identify those people bringing fentanyl into our community. He also does some volunteer work, he's a member of Fraternal Order Police Lodge 35, he supported No Shave November, and continues on to do that apparently, which he's allowed to. He's also, and that No Shave November we did this year, we donated funds to the American Cancer Research. He's done Shop With A Cop, which we've done out at Walmart, and Stuffed The Squad as well. His next assignment, after promotion tonight, he'll be supervising our afternoon patrol shift, and some of his additional duties include the emergency radio systems, we're going to try and get our bicycle officer program up again, something that trustee Schmidt started when he was the chief here, and then, he's also going to make sure, Kobe, that the streetlights are all on once a month. I know we check those for you, so, that is some of the duties Justin will be taking on tonight.
You know, it's funny, for us, for Justin, and we did a signing ceremony here, was it in December or November?
No, October.
October, a couple of months ago, and we did a new four-year contract extension with the fire or police department, it starts on May 1st, and, you know, obviously, there's some pay adjustments and other things done, but the most popular thing in that contract, as Justin shows it, they all love the fact we now allow officers to wear beards. And so, I'm telling you, I've asked many officers, what do you like best about the contract? Right here, mayor, right here. So, I'm glad it worked out, and little stuff like that makes a difference, but we appreciate it. So, Justin, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Justin Wolf.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Justin.
Thanks, sir.
Come on. See, I prepared. So, Justin, whoops, sorry, you got family here tonight?
Yes, sir.
And we need to do some.
Yeah, I got my mom, Barb, she's got the purple sweatshirt on, my beautiful wife, Amanda, next to her, my brother, kind of looks like me back there, Josh, his wife, my sister-in-law, Lindsay, they're three children.
Wave when I'm, wave your hand, guys, I got treats for you, there, there you go.
Jack, Sean, Daniel, and my sister, Jamie.
Okay, so we've got quite a crowd here.
Yep.
Now, what town do you live in now?
Lake Zirk.
Lake Zirk, okay, nice town, not in Elk Grove, but it's okay. Well, first off, what do you enjoy about the job? What made you want to be a police officer?
The cliche is, you know, I wanted to help people, but obviously, growing up, one of my neighbors was actually deputy chief in Palatine, so I kind of got to go down the street, interact with some of the police officers there, and I saw that there's more to the job, more exciting opportunities to interact with people, you know, which kind of ultimately, ultimately led to me getting into the field, so.
We're glad you did, we're glad you're here in Elk Grove.
Thank you.
And like Chief said, you've moved up very quickly.
Yes.
We appreciate that, it's a good sign.
Thank you.
Hey, young guys, come on down here, your cousin, nephews or whatever?
Nephews, yes.
Nephews, come on down. You're going to help your uncle. My God, you guys are getting old. What grade are you in?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, yeah. Play any sports?
Basketball and baseball.
What?
Basketball and baseball.
Bass, bass, I'm not sure that. You know any sports?
Soccer and basketball.
And bet, bet, I don't know that sport, and you?
Basketball, soccer, and baseball.
We'll still give you some, it's okay. Now, I'm going to ask all of you to carry some, you're going to share with all the rest of the family, okay?
Okay.
I'll give one to your uncle, give him one?
Right.
Yeah, sure, okay, there you go. So, here, give each some to share, hang on, make sure you share with all your relatives out there, should be very proud, and thank you for coming tonight, it's a big night for you, uncle, so thank you for being there. And here you go. Yeah, don't worry, I got you, buddy. Basketball, now, I still give you some, don't worry. There you go. Okay, make sure you share with everyone, okay? Thanks a lot, congratulations.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
All right, next up, we have William Bill Callahan. Another one.
Proud favorite.
So, tonight, we're going to swear in Bill as a commander. He got hired in June of 2008, he's got 14 and a half years' service here with the village. He went to the suburban law enforcement academy, his prior work experience, he worked as a carpenter at McCormick Place, and he also worked at the Page County Sheriff's Office, grew up in Oak Forest, Illinois, which makes him a devoted Sox fan.
What?
You heard me, mayor, a Sox fan.
Sox.
Oh, you just wait, yeah. He attended Western Illinois University.
George?
Leathernecks.
Leathernecks it is.
What about that, leathernecks? What the?
Actually, it's fighting leathernecks.
What's a leatherneck?
That was in the war.
Really? What's a leatherneck?
That was in the war.
Okay. Uh, he's got a Masters of Art in Law Enforcement, Computer Science, Sociology. He's got over 3,500 hours of training. He's a certified motorcycle operator, a traffic crash reconstructionist, rapid deployment instructor, a truck enforcement officer. In 2019, he was a class supervisor at the suburban law enforcement academy, and he's also a recent, recent graduate at Northwest Public Safety School of Police Staff and Command. He was the class president, over 350 hours of study for that, and he also got straight A's while he was there. His awards, on the afternoon shift officer of the month on several occasions, he's got several perfect attendance awards, he has traffic safety awards for his enforcement efforts, and it's been known that he will write just about anyone, Mayor, a ticket. He's got...
There's no fanaticism in Elk Grove, trust me.
He's gotten exemplary performance awards for protecting citizens during demonstrations we've had, traffic control during our summer concerts. So he started off as a patrol officer, he was a Northern Illinois Police Alarm System Field Force member, so those are the folks that are out on the front lines if there's riots. We don't have them in our community, but he's been up to Evanston a bunch of times the last few years, protecting people's right to protest. Range officer, promoted to sergeant in 2019 where he was assigned to traffic unit supervisor. Bill is also the president of Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 35 where he coordinates volunteer efforts such as Special Olympics, polar plunge, cop on a rooftop, we did the plane pull, St. Baldry's Stuffed The Squad event at Walmart, and he's also active with the Boy Scouts Pack 495, which our police department sponsors. His next assignment, he will be the afternoon shift commander, responsible for all the patrol officers, sergeants. He's gonna coordinate our department's range program, use of force, and our less lethal program. Bill, come here.
Now, they say afternoon commander, actually, since they're on 12-hour shifts, it's the overnight commander. So, I know it's a sacrifice for the family, so we thank you for that. So, Mr. Callahan, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, William Callahan.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police Commander.
Police Commander.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police Commander.
Police Commander.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I think we're swearing, I think we're swearing on a basketball team tonight with all these... My neck's getting sore. So Bill, I know you got the whole, first off, why don't you, just a family here?
I got my wife, Colleen.
Wait, please. You, just so you know, see there, there, and there, you're on TV right now. I'm not, the last time we had Nielsen ratings, we draw 3.4 billion people every board meeting. So please, you know, look, you know, you're on, so, okay, your wife, okay?
My wife, my son, Will, my daughter Delaney, my baby Maeve, my brother Brad, my sister Shannon, her boyfriend Tyler, my mother, her boyfriend Ted, my buddy Eric, Kyle, his wife Jess, Jason, Jen, their two kids, friend Sotol, Ace, and their two children. And Missy Vale? Oh! And, uh, my comedons from Celia, Bob Nicholas, Chris Parsons, and Ricky Gilhers.
Well, you got quite a family here. Bill, you've done a great job, again. You know, and when I do Deputy Chief Torres, I swear all these guys in brand new. It shows either one, I'm getting old.
Yes, you are.
Or I've been here a hell of a long time. But, it's great seeing all of you work your ways up through the ranks. It's almost like we're parents. I hate to say that, we feel like that. Very proud of the work they've done, um, when Bill first started and all that, working at the pre, or the concerts, and done a great job, so you should be proud. You live Houghland State, right?
Yes, sir.
Houghland State, see, I keep track of things, so, uh, what's special? What makes you feel Elk Grove's a special place for you to make this commitment?
I actually have a speech. You want me to do that?
Sure, give a speech. Go ahead.
It's like I cover that, I think.
When someone's bigger than me and has a gun, they can do whatever they want. Go ahead.
All right, well, I first want to thank everybody for coming out on Tuesday afternoon, especially to honor Justin and myself. My wife brought the kids, she told me last night, this morning, and a minute ago, to be quick. So I will. So please get the chocolate ready, because most of them came for the chocolate. You're gonna need more than that.
We got it.
Uh, it's easy for me to see the blessings and privileges in my life. I come from a great home and caring family. I want to thank my mother and father, my brother Brad, Maggie and Shannon. I have great friends who I just mentioned, colleagues and mentors. A lot of them are in this room today, and I would not be the person who I am or where I am without them. I want to thank you all, and I love you all. I want to thank Chief Walsh, the command staff, the mayor, the trustees, the village manager, and everybody in Elk Grove Village. The continued support through this village is priceless. Most of all, I want to thank my wife, she does everything for our family, and she sacrifices a lot so I can do this job and follow my passion and help people. I love you, Colleen, and thank you for everything you've given me.
Whoa! Whoa! Yeah, I sure want to be the next guy you're swearing tonight.
Well, I also brought chocolates for the mayor and the trustees.
Hey!
Because I've, I know I've eaten my fair share of chocolate here. A quick quote in a daily practice, I like to say, surround yourself with people that push you to do better. No drama or negativity, just higher goals and higher motivation, good times and positive energy, no jealousy or hate, simply bringing out the absolute best in each of us. We have an exceptional organization from the top down. When all levels of the organization come together for the greater good and a common goal, you get Elk Grove Village. We have the best police department, fire department, and every other department within our community. Can't forget my guys at Public Works as well. I want to thank the sergeants and the officers who worked diligently to keep the town safe and a great place to live and work. I'm honored and proud to serve this community, and I appreciate you trusting me with this responsibility. I won't let you down. Thank you, let you be listened to minutes.
Will, come here. Will, come here. Bring the hat, no, no, bring the hat. Will, bring the hat, bring the hat. Come on. Okay, hold the hat, hold the hat, two hands. Now, your job, Will, I'm counting on you.
Counting on you?
There you go, sweetheart. That's for you. There you go, sweetheart. I'm counting on you to share that, come here. I'm counting on you to share that now, Will, you gotta share that with the rest of the family.
Ricky.
There you go. There you go. Come here. There's only plenty, Will's got plenty, there you go. Okay. Good job. Good job.
The guy with gray hair, he's gotta have a few.
Okay.
They all came down there. Wait a second, stand there, poor Torres.
You're welcome.
Sorry, got it ready. Is that for me?
No, she just wanted to show you. I'm taking something.
Very good.
All right. Our final promotion this evening will be Chris Torres. Are you Maeve? Are you Maeve? No? Okay, so, um, tonight, we're gonna promote Chris Torres, will be Deputy Chief of Support Services. He was hired in April of 2003, he's got 20 years of service here in the village. He attended the Illinois State Police Academy, graduated in 2002, and that was because he was a Wheaton Police Officer before he came here to Elk Grove. He attended Loyola University in Chicago.
Yay! Rambler.
There you go, ramblers. He's got a degree in public accounting and management information system. I believe his father's there with a Sox jacket on, and so I believe he is a second diehard Sox fan. There's another team in Chicago that someone else follows, but I just...
They play the shot, don't they?
No, there's another one, Mayor. As far as training goes, Chris has over 3,000 hours of training, arson investigation, computer crimes, use of force, rifle, TASER instructor. He is a certified homicide investigator, crisis negotiator, internal affairs investigator, and Chris has really spent a lot of time in training in financial crimes, and he also just recently coordinated our body worn camera project here in Elk Grove Village, which was huge. We had another year to go before we were required to do it, but the mayor and board allowed us to do it early so that we can be transparent. Chris was able to put together the whole body worn camera system for us, and so far so good. Chris was also a class supervisor for recruit class at the academy in 2016, and in May 2019, he attended Northwest Public Safety and Command School through Northwestern University, and another straight A. Congratulations on that. He's had three years of perfect attendance awards, exemplary performance awards for financial crimes investigations, which are some of the most detailed investigations you have to do, and a particular one, I noted that he saved a company in the business park over $350,000 in funds that were embezzled. He's also been our incident commander during our summer concert series, and again, he started off as a police officer, he was a field ET, an FTO, Field Training Officer, incident commander, and he was also assigned to the Illinois State Police Auto Theft Task Force. Promoted sergeant in 2017, range supervisor. He was also part of our MCAT, which is, if you saw the Brown's Chicken thing that was in the paper the other day about 20 years later, MCAT was formed. That's where every town kicks in an investigator when there's a serious crime, usually a death or something major, and that's kinda where that was born out of back then, and Chris was a supervisor on the surveillance team and on the investigators' team. He was promoted to commander in November 2020, and of course, his volunteer efforts, he's the president of the Elk Grove Village Police Pension Board. How many years is that going on?
A lot.
A lot. Okay, we'll leave it at that. Relay for Life, American Cancer Society, Cop on a Rooftop, Stuffed The Squad event. His next assignment again is gonna be a Deputy Chief Support Services, responsible for investigations, accreditation, records, social service, as well as most of the civilian personnel that support what we do in the police department. So, Chris Torres.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher Torres.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Having been appointed to the position of?
Deputy Police Chief.
Deputy Police Chief.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
Deputy Police Chief?
Deputy Police Chief.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So who do you got here tonight, Chris?
Also, I got, uh, I got my wife Christine, and I got my parents, Anthony and Patricia.
Now, you should be very proud. It's come a long way, I mean, it's, it's, it seems like yesterday, I know it's been 20 years, but like I say, to see, I was already married six years by the time I swore you, it, it, what you've done has been phenomenal. You've worked up very quickly. I mean, you were only commander two years ago, about three years ago, and already up, you've done a phenomenal job. And the department's better for it, and we're excited about that. So, anything you want to talk about tonight?
Yeah, I do, just real quick, I wanna, I wanna thank my wife and my kids, you know, you know, doing police work, you make a lot of sacrifices, and you've been there, you've been there from the beginning. You know, even going down to Springfield, you know, all the, all those weeks down when I was brand new in the academy, where at State Police Command, you have to live down there, so you can't go home every day. So, so I would only see her on the weekends, and, and, you know, that was difficult and taxing, and, you know, I, from the beginning, you know, you've been by my side, so I greatly appreciate that. And, you know, about this time last year with my parents, you know, we had a pretty good scare. My dad, uh, he's gonna be mad at me for this, but he was diagnosed with cancer, and he's been receiving treatments, and, you know, the fight that my dad and my mom have been going through, it's very inspiring to me. Thursday is his last treatment.
Hey!
I love you all, and you have shown me the value of hard work, so I appreciate everything you've done for me. Thank you.
Well, tonight, I'm even a Sox fan. So, hang in there, keep going, God bless on that. So, there's a lot of X ones for you, so I'll give Chris all these. That should be enough for you. Congratulations, keep doing the good work, and we thank you.
Thank you so much.
God bless, thank you. Before, we'll let you all folks go in a second here, before we get moving on, because I knew we got the little ones, all that. Bill, you really set the bar high, I mean, jeez, oh, gosh. That's not normal, just so you know, what Bill did, that's not... It's good that you do that, Bill. You realize family's important, you got beautiful kids, you all got great families, very proud. And I thank you. First, I want to say on behalf of the board of trustees, I want to thank the officers, I want to thank the ones who showed up tonight. Butch, thank you for the great work you do, it's a thankless job, I know, doing the work of Police Fire Commission, but we appreciate it, and you've done a great job. Look at the people you've brought in, Butch, they stay, they move up, and that's because you guys make good choices. And to the families here, thank you for your sacrifice. It's not easy having family members that are policemen. I know my brother is a fireman and a federal agent, so it's not easy for families, and you guys put up even more than they do. They love what they're doing, you need to put up with what they're doing, so I know it's not easy, but thank you. And on behalf of the community, we thank you all for being here tonight. So, go ahead and get going now, no problem, we'll stop the meeting for a minute, and we'll get going after you leave, but again, thank you. And little ones, I'm sorry Dairy Queen's closed, but all your parents, relatives, owe[1584.92] And little ones, I'm sorry Dairy Queen's closed, but all your parents, relatives owe you Dairy Queen next year. If they don't get Dairy Queen, you come tell me, because we gave them the promotion, I can take it away. So, they owe you Dairy Queen, okay? Okay, folks, have a good night, thank you. Okay, the walking out, now that concludes the mayor's report tonight, trustee, but a lot of it was swearing in.
I understand.
The majority. Um, okay, move on now, trustees' report, we'll start with trustee Schmidt.
Yes, I just wanna say for those who haven't heard that, uh, last week, uh, actually, early last week, Chuck, uh, Chuck Wallace, the police chief, called me and advised me that we were supposed to get ready to go to a parole hearing for Frank DeLuca, who was involved in the Columbo murders back in nineteen seventy-six, and we were planning our strategy, and a couple of days later, he called me and told me that Mr. DeLuca had passed away while in prison. So, we will not be going to the parole hearing, obviously, in February, but, uh, I just wanna let people know that it was the intention of the judge, Judge Arujin Pincham, when he sentenced, uh, Patty Columbo and Mr. DeLuca in nineteen seventy-seven, to such long sentences that the goal was never to get out of prison, and that happened with Mr. DeLuca, so. He passed away, he never got out, and, uh, we are preparing now for a April, uh, parole hearing for, uh, Patty Columbo. That concludes my report.
You know, it's funny you bring it up, uh, well, Jeff was younger, and Chris was younger at the time it happened. Well, I said, that changed Elk Grove forever. That's the first night in my entire life in Elk Grove, I think I was fifteen, sixteen when it happened, that my dad locked the front door in the house, we never locked it otherwise, never, ever. And he had to go the next day up to the old ladies hardware up by the shopping, by the bowling alley, and get keys, we didn't have keys for the door. He had like one key, he had to go up and get keys for all of us to have keys now. So, it's a shame, we lost a lot that day with what you did, and, um, and they don't deserve to see the light of day. Not in freedom, never. I hope Patty gets the same fate that Frank got.
We hope so too.
So, no question, thank you, and, uh, former Deputy Chief Rose.
Say Ray Rose, right, we will all be going in April for Patty's.
Keep, keep doing it, please, 'cause she does not deserve the right to see life. Okay, trustee Prochnow.
Thank you, just in regard to the story that you just, you just heard, uh, deputy chief, Deputy Chief Ray Rose was my next door neighbor at the time, so I got every detail of what had happened, and it just, I still get goosebumps.
What they did to that boy.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Yes.
So, thank you for your service for that. Uh, just a reminder, the farm, the winter's farmer's market is back on, we've started back. We had one this past Saturday, January seventh, and the winter's market meets every other Saturday. So, the next winter market will be Saturday, January twenty-first, at the Christus Victor Church, which is on Arlington Heights Road across from the theater. It goes from eight in the morning until one in the afternoon, and they have a variety of foods, crafts, baked goods, sandwiches, I mean, just a, a large variety. Come out and find out for yourself how wonderful the market is. And just a li, my, my last reminder, I do this every winter meeting, although we have been very blessed this winter to have only one snowfall. It doesn't mean it's not coming. If it does, please be a good neighbor, shovel your sidewalks, shovel your driveways so that people, pedestrians can walk on the sidewalks instead of on the streets, especially people out there walking their children to school, or walking their animals and pets. And there's a lot of people out there just walking for their health, let's try and make it a safe environment for them. And if you have a neighbor or someone that's near you that might need a little help with their driveway or sidewalk, if you can, give them a hand, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Listener?
No report.
Trustee Feichter?
Our tourist organization, Meet Chicago Northwest, um, just came out with a, a very nice and good report about how sales are going in hotels in our region. Right now, as of, I think, November, they, we are up forty-nine percent in room sales in our hotels, and this is a real big deal. I mean, brings a lot of money into, uh, all the communities us that we are part of in this, and it, it's a good thing. This, now we are, from what I understand, only nine percent ahead of where we were in two thousand and nineteen, so, um, progress. Things are getting better in the tourist area, people are traveling, and that's good news, and that's my report.
Thank you, trustee Feichter. Trustee Jeffrey Charos Frankie?
No report.
Trustee Miller?
Um, I have had several people ask me how I get involved in Elk Grove Village, and there are some really great organizations. I'd like to shout, give a shout out to the Community Character Coalition. They do a lot of wonderful things for this village, um, as well. In fact, it's their twentieth anniversary, uh, this year, and I'm sure that trustee Feichter will talk more about that as, as it comes along. Um, another organization is Packages for Patriots, um, and that takes place at the Lutheran Church of the Holy Spirit. The third Tuesday of every month, they pack, they pack, um, wonderful things for, uh, patriots, and they send them off, they send about thirty boxes out every month, and they have not stopped during the pandemic. They continue to service our patriots overseas, and, um, if you ever need to get involved in the village, there are many, many ways to do that. That concludes my report.
Well, there's other good organizations, you got the Lions Club.
The Lions Club?
You got the Leo Club for Young People, you got the Rotary Club.
Rotary.
Um, your church probably has good groups, I mean, there's a lot of places to get involved in the village.
And people ask about that all the time, so please call one of the trustees, call the village, there are some great organizations that we have, um, so I appreciate that.
Very good, thank you. Move on now to accounts payable warrant, first, we have, uh, Mr. Knickerbocker's, uh, December month payment, um, from December thirty-first.
I move approval of the December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two accounts payable warrant in the amount of fourteen million, eight hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars, long number, and nine cents.
Uh, we have motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Feichter, and make sure everyone understands, Mr. Knickerbocker's pay is three hundred and fifteen dollars, nine cents for the month of December. So, um, Caroline, yes, Caroline is working tonight as our clerk, so, we have a new one tonight, so would you please call the roll?
Yes, trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. We have accounts payable warrant for January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I move approval of the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three accounts payable warrant in the amount of seven hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Feichter, record the votes, please demonstrate it, six to nothing. We have consent agenda items, Mr. Knickerbocker, for the first of the year, A as in?
Apartment.
Apartment, okay. Through H as in?
Hotel, keep it in living situation.
Okay, apartment hotel. Um, any, uh, first, I need a motion.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listener. Any staff or board member have questions, comments on any consent agenda items tonight? Anybody in the audience that's here tonight for the consent agenda? Seeing none, caring none, and without objection, court of votes, please demonstrate, six to nothing. There's no items on the regular agenda? Anything under plan commission, Mr. Roan?
No items under plan commission.
And zoning board of appeals?
No item, no items under zoning board of appeals.
Okay, boards and commissions, we'll start off with the youth committee, trustee Frankie.
It's that time of year, uh, the two thousand and twenty-three youth scholarship applications are now online at the village. Uh, we also will be delivering them to the high schools. If you're a senior graduating and you'd like to try to get one of the seven one thousand dollar scholarships, please fill out the application, have it in no later than May fifth. Last year, we couldn't accept a few because it came in a few days later. Um, get these things filled out early, go to your counselor, see what you need to put down. We've always had some, uh, great applications. Again, the seven thousand dollars come, uh, two from the Parks Foundation, and five from the village. And we will be picking the winners, uh, thir, about the third of June, and we will inform the winners the week of June fifth. So, I will be bringing this up probably for the next three months or four months, so. Uh, but the forms are available now, so please either pick them up at your school or, uh, go onto the village website and download it. That is all I have.
Thank you. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt?
No report.
Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener?
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Prochnow?
Uh, just a short report, um, the village in conjunction and cooperation with the Vitallant organization is sponsoring our quarterly, uh, blood drive. Our blood drive this, will be Saturday, January fourteenth, from eight AM to one PM here at Village Hall in Room E, the conference room down at the end of the building. Uh, you can make an appointment to donate by going online to Vitallant, V-I-T-A-L-A-N-T dot org, or calling eight seven seven two five eight four eight two five. Appointments are recommended, but walk-ins are always, always welcome, and I've seen a lot of advertising on TV, and I'm sure it's very clear that there's a great shortage of blood at this time of year because of the holidays and a lot of other reasons, but please try and save a life and donate some blood, and that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you, trustee Prochnow. Information Committee, trustee Miller?
So, on the website, and also I got it on, um, I'm connected via email, but I got an email today, and on the website is, um, safety tips, prevention tips to reduce the risk of catalytic converter theft. Um, as we know that it continues, not only in other parts of, uh, Illinois, but also here in Elk Grove Village and surrounding towns. Catalytic converters are stolen because they are valuable for metal scrapping. Please remember these following tips to avoid being a victim. Park in well lit areas and close to building entrances that can easily be seen by others. If you have a garage, park your car or vehicle inside and keep the garage door shut. Catalytic converters are typically removed using power saws. Be aware, if you hear a power saw in the middle of the night, especially. Um, and consider installing a catalytic converter protection device. Please do not confront the offenders, please call nine one one immediately. This is on the village website as well as other social media, so please take, uh, note of that. And if you wanna stay connected, again, go to the website, there's ways to connect, uh, via email. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you, trustee Miller. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feichter?
As I was coming to our meeting tonight, I was very happy to see that there were a large bunch of Christmas tree lights that have been turned in. Every year we do this, we collect those lights that people no longer are using, and they go off, and they are recycled, so that's a real good thing to do. Bring them here, drop them off at the village, and they will be recycled. There, a lot of people are starting to do that, and I would encourage people to continue that on. Uh, trustee Miller mentioned something about the Community Character Coalition. Today, at our meeting this morning, um, I spoke about what, one of the projects that we are gonna be working on and, uh, have actually started, and that's a sustainability project. I was explaining to people some of the things that's involved in it, and I was really happy to hear a very, very positive response to that. And I think that if, um, we needed citizen groups to be part of this program, they would be very welcome to, or very interested in, uh, joining the effort. Very positive response, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feichter. Parade Committee, myself, we had our first meeting last night, um, oh, yeah, myself. It is.
Never heard of that.
Oh, it's myself. Uh, we had our first meeting last night, um, and we are going to, for, uh, recognize for our grand marshals, first responders. So, we're excited about that, and that'd be the, um, recognition this year. Uh, first responders be the theme for the parade, and also for the grand marshals, work on that. So, we're excited about it, looking forward to it, remember, it's now in September, tied with Frankie Fest, or as some people may call it, Oktoberfest, but most call Frankie Fest. So, we're looking forward to that in September, and again, last year, we had the giant balloon, we had the characters, not counting the trustees, the other characters. Um, you know, we had a lot of different things that we haven't had before, we look to keep coming up with new ideas every year. Uh, we move on now, Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Prochnow?
No report.
Um, Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Schmidt?
There'll be a Capital Improvements Committee meeting on Monday, January sixteenth, at three PM at the Public Works Facility at four fifty East Devine, where we will discuss the, uh, upcoming, uh, projects for the new budget year.
Very good.
That concludes my report.
Airport update, I know things are moving with, uh, um, the Flight Quiet Program, more information should be coming on that in the near future. Okay, Mr. Knickerbocker, it's been a month, Midsummer Concert Classic Series. Opening act at July fourth.
A big day, uh, KC and the Sunshine Band.
You got it, buddy. Then, a week later, since Fourth of July is on Tuesday this year, it'll be July eleventh, here at the Town Center.
I forgot to practice this, uh, spinners.
Very good, I'm impressed. Then, we actually go nine days later, because it'll be Rotary Fest, that'll be Thursday, and that'll be over at Rotary Green.
I missed the name, an American, like reckless or something, American?
All American Rejects.
Rejects, reckless rejects.
All American Rejects. Not bad, not bad.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Right now, you're banned the eighties. Um, our fourth concert, would you be out here?
There could be one or two, the Oak Ridge Boys, or the Oak, or the Oak Brook Boys.
Not the Oak Brook, Oak Ridge Boys.
Whoever comes.
And we finish up here on Tuesday, August first.
With the, the lead singer of Heart, right, Karen?
Karen.
Somebody.
Wilson, Nancy?
Heart. Gotta have Heart. Whatever.
Close enough, not bad. Okay.
Oh, and, and Karen and Nancy. You're welcome.
Okay, very good, good enough. Okay, move on, Special Events Committee, our next special event will be Memorial Day. Think about it, it's only four months away, four and a half months.
Time is just flying.
You know, my dad used to always say, it gets faster and faster the older you get.
Your dad's right.
And he always warned, don't wish for time, you know, 'cause kids wake up, God, Dad, I wish it was next month. Gee, Dad, I wish it was like next week. He used to say, don't ever say that.
Why does it always seem that time stops during the mayor's report?
No, that's a valid point. God gives you slices of heaven, and wants you to enjoy it. So, the longer it goes, the more enjoyment you get out of it, so it makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, Record Commission, no report. I already mentioned how great our businesses are doing, that making sure new young people are getting. Reports from our beloved village manager, Mr. Matthew Roan.
I have no report.
Excited about the new year coming up?
Super excited.
Lot of things going on.
Lot of things.
Projects, lot of, gonna keep you going. We move on now to our acting village clerk, Caroline?
Yes, nominating petitions have been filed, and ballots are being prepared by the Cook County Clerk. Early voting will begin on March twentieth and run through April third.
And we should have it here again?
Yes.
Good, good, good. That's municipal elections, so you vote for school board, I know fifty-nine's contested, two fourteen's contested, two eleven's contested, I'm not sure about fifty-four, not sure on that. Um, library's got contested races, village board has contested races, park board's the one that has no contested, Tom Cook's already in on his own vote. So, there's reason to follow, remember, I tell this all the time, folks, no government has more effect on you daily than local government. No government, we're the most impactful on your life. Please stay tuned to what's going on, get educated on the candidates, and please make sure you please, please vote. April fourth, the election, early voting starting earlier. Um, unfinished business, all taken care of, Mr. Knickerbocker? As usual, you have nothing down there? Um, new business from board members? No items? Okay. Helen, how are we doing today? Okay, I see you in April, I believe, so looking forward to it. Anything going good with, um, your senior center? And I'm glad to see you two are back together again. Normally, you always have a seat between ya, so obviously, the holidays brought you closer. Now, if you're smart, you would've brought her flowers like, uh, Commander Callahan, but if you got time to do it, Jewel's still open, so you're good. Uh, very good. Anybody want to address the board today, whether here? Jane, good seeing you again. So, okay, uh, with no public comment, um, we go two weeks now to our next meeting. We start again in January, two weeks a month, that'll be the twenty-fourth. I need a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
The motion by trustee Feichter, second by trustee Miller. Caroline, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, passes six to nothing, folks, meeting adjourned.